No, I won't. We're out. I'd like to call the Midland County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10:07 a.m., Tuesday, August 16th. Ann, will you call? Roll, please.
Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Seven present, zero absentee.
Commissioner Twilliger, will you lead us in the indication and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, we pray for your guidance today to execute our duties and responsibilities with integrity and respect. We pray for your wisdom to best serve our residents and their needs. As always, we seek your wisdom to serve with fiscal responsibility, credibility, transparency, and to maintain public trust of the residents of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the approval of the minutes for July 12, 2022, and July 19, 2022. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes and we're going to move on to acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed, General Bank claims for the weeks of 6/27 through 7/1, $262,435.19, with total general fund expenditures, $110,206.41. General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/4 through 7/8, $414,098.36, with total general fund expenditures, $97,065.33. General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/11 through 7/15, $1,941,386.88, with total general fund expenditures, $175,422.29. Bank claims for the weeks of 7/18 through 7/22, $747,925.78, with total general fund expenditures, General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/25 through 7/29, $428,490.77, with total general fund expenditures, $123,648.91.
All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the bills. And next on the agenda is the consideration of applicants to the road commission. We need, we have four applicants. We need one of four. We'll be voting for that, but I think there's some applicants here in the crowd, and if anybody would like to come forward, address why you'd like to run, and why you think you'd be a good choice, we'd love to have you come up, state your name and address, and that's what we do. So, would anybody like to come up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rod Klowa. I'm owner of Circle K Service in Midland here, and also resident in Midland and the city. Our family has a history of service, which, you know, is bred into us. I want to give back to my community, because this community's done so much for our family and myself. I feel I have a lot to offer in it. I actually own a shop and repair facility, which is what the road commission is. I learned a lot of it with my father's prior experience as a road commissioner, on what went on. And I'm very interested in serving the community in that respect. I feel I have a lot to offer as an applicant, with my knowledge and experience in running the shop, and managing it, but also in serving different boards and various committees on there. So, with that, just appreciate your consideration.
Good morning. I'm Bill Kozak. I live in the city of Coleman. I was the Public Services Director for the city of Coleman for 36 and a half years. I feel as though I have a lot of experience in a lot of things that the road commission does. In fact, I've worked with the road commission on projects inside of the city that the road commission were part of. I just, I feel as though that when this opportunity arose, I'm retired now, I have the time to devote. I'm also the fire chief in our community, so community service kind of comes natural to me, I guess. And I like it. So, I just felt as though I might, I might be helpful to the county, and wanted to give it a shot. So, I would appreciate your consideration, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else like to speak? Please state your name and address.
I'm Annie Veltkamp, and I reside at 5606 West Barden Road in Coleman. I'd first like to thank you all for your service to the community. That is my motivation for being here, is to serve the community. I'm a stay-at-home mom, so most of my volunteering is relevant to my children's activities at their homeschool co-op, and T-ball, things of that nature. I can't list a bunch of relevant experience. My motivation is to serve the community, with integrity, and I have a willingness to learn the process, and that's why I'm here today. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
My name's Dan Lemey. I've worked construction basically my whole life. I've been a lifelong resident in Midland County. I've enjoyed all your services, and it's an opportunity, now that I'm retired, to give back to the community. I think my experiences in the construction field would be a good asset for the board, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Are we going to have an opportunity to discuss?
No, we're going to vote right now.
Oh, would I make a comment?
It's, we usually don't. We usually just vote, so, no.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So, I'm going to ask Commissioner Dorian and Commissioner Twilliger to be our tellers. And everybody, please vote and sign your name to it. When everybody's ready. You can take mine on the way by.
Not, not everyone stated their address.
Oh, okay.
It's on their applications.
So.
Thank you.
I didn't know that's what you wanted to say. I thought it was something about the applicants or...
I'll say it during Commissioner's comments.
There you go. Perfect.
The light's on.
Yep.
Is yours?
Yep. Yeah, my light's on.
Can you touch it? If you touch it, it'll come on. There's a spot to touch.
Oh, now it's lit.
Yeah, it's working. I can hear it.
Well.
Yeah, but they're working.
The gremlins are at work today.
Okay, the results are in. I'd like to thank all of the applicants.
Absolutely.
Rod Klowa was nominated to serve on the road commission. Thank you, Rod, and again, thank you, everybody else. And there are plenty of other volunteering opportunities, so, many other opportunities. But like to thank everybody for their application. And going to move on to the special program of the day now. It's the presentation of the 2021 Annual Audit with Doug Dieter from Raymond.
Afternoon, or morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
As Chairman said, I'm Doug Dieter with Raymond. I have Jason Salzleil here with me.
Yep.
Raymond did do the county's audit, and single audit, which is of the federal awards for the year ending December 31st, 2021. Jason did present the audit to the finance committee last week, went into a lot more detail, had a lot of good conversations, discussions. So today, Jason's just going to run through some high-level items from the audit for you, put together a PowerPoint that's up on the screen, leave each of you have a copy in front of you as well. If there are any questions throughout, don't hesitate to ask, or you can ask after Jason's done running through his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we had issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so the big binder in front of you is the county's financial statements. Everything in here is county's information, with the exception of our audit opinion. The unmodified opinion is the best opinion that we can provide for the county. The next sheet is kind of just a high-level overview of the general fund balance sheet, which is the main operating fund of the county. And so there, you can see just the high level of what makes up the assets liabilities and fund balance. So, fund balance being if you paid off all your liabilities, what's left over for the county. I think the general fund fund balance is about 35%, 36%, I think of one year's expenditures, which is a pretty good fund balance to have. The next slide is just an overview and comparison from the prior years of its revenue and transfers in for the general fund. For the most part, pretty comparable. The biggest difference there would be the, the transfer in from last year.
Transfers in.
The transfer in this year, there was some use of some of the ARPA funds for public safety wages. The button's not, doesn't seem to be clicking. There we go. All right. So the next slide is, again, a comparison of expenditures and transfers out from last year to 20, from 2021 to 2020, as well as comparison to budget. Really, no big swings or changes there. The next slide is a comparison of the ending fund balance for the general fund. So you guys had initially budgeted for a decrease in fund balance of approximately $600,000. The actual was an increase of 1.6 million to fund balance, which is always good to see, that you didn't end up spending as much as you had, and maybe some increases in revenue as well.
That's primarily due to ARPA.
A big piece of that, definitely, the transfer in for ARPA.
Okay.
The next slide here is a comparison of the AT-345 pension, which you guys have currently more in your investments than what the pension liability is, so you have a net pension asset for this. This just gives you a historical overview of the pension liability and the related assets to fund that pension.
Just, just to confirm that this is as of December 31st.
This is as of...
Correct, December 31st, 2021. So everybody knows what happened in the first six months of this year, so...
Right, so these numbers could be different based on the markets that fluctuate. The next slide is the net pension liability for ERS. So here, there is a slight net liability at AT-1231, 2021, of around $800,000. The next slide, this is the OPEBS for retiree healthcare. This information is not as big as the pension information for the historical lookback. It didn't start until 2017, where you guys would be recording this in the audit. Here, you haven't been contributing as long or as much, so there is a bigger net liability there. The funding is pretty good, at 61% of the net liability.
I just want to remind everybody that the state has this 40% look, where if, if you don't achieve that level, you get a little help with your putting from, from the state. We're well above that now, so that's actually a pretty good deal.
Yep.
I just wanted to comment on the retiree healthcare as well, is, you know, that 61% funded this, looks like a large liability, I think it's like $24 million, so it's a large number, but it's, it's pretty well-funded compared to other plans. You have a lot of entities, like we talked about before, that do as pay-as-you-go, so all they're contributing to the plan is current-year retiree premiums, which you don't get ahead by doing that. So the county has made that effort to contribute that extra money to make sure that plan is well-funded for its retirees.
Thank you.
And then the, the last slide I want to touch on was in relation to federal awards. This would be the federal grants that the county received last year and expended. So last year, the county expended almost $7 million in federal awards. The programs that we specifically audited was the Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Fund, which that would be the ARPA funds that the county used, as well as the federal transit cluster, which was the Midland Connection, I think.
County Connection.
County Connection. And we have issued an unmodified opinion on the federal award compliance, which again, that's the best opinion that we can provide. Those are kind of the, all the items I wanted to touch base on today. Anything else? Any questions?
No, I think, thank you. Sounds like good news, sounds like we're in good shape, and I appreciate the audit. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks for getting Mike.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to open up to public comment for anything that is not on our agenda today. So if anybody has any public comment on anything not on our agenda, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Ann, would you read committee report number one, please?
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the request to waive county policy 303.3 in regards to soliciting bids for the purchase of supplies. We further recommend approval of the request to enter into a multi-year agreement with Valant Biosciences for the purchase of Larvicide through the 2025 season. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 80-8-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
No.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no. Motion carries.
Committee report number two, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee, have reviewed the amendment to the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Determine this agreement is from October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023. This amendment includes an additional $950,575 for emerging threats funding. The recommended approval of the amendment to the grant and the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 81-8-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 81-8-22.
Do we have any public comment on this? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Report number three, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee, have reviewed the agreement with Archiviti Design LLC for the provision of architectural and engineering services on the remodel of the health department. The maximum total fee for services is $66,560 plus expenses, and sufficient funding is available in the health department fund. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
The Chair of the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee and the Finance Committee, have reviewed the agreement with Archiviti Design LLC for the provision of architectural and engineering services on the remodel of the health department. The maximum total fee for services is $66,560 plus expenses, and sufficient funding is available in the health department fund. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-22.
And Commissioner Noson.
The Chair of the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 86-8-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .55 mils for the calendar year 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 71-7-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number five, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .37 mils for the purpose of contributing to providing board and care to current and future residents of Pinecrest Farms in 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 72-7-22.
Is there any public comment? Is there any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 12, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .30 mils for the purpose of funding central dispatch operations for 2023, including maintenance of the countywide public safety radio system. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 76-7-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Next.
August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .25 mils for the purpose of contributing to countywide public transportation services, exclusive of services provided by the city of Midland in 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 74-7-22.
Is there any public comment on this? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number eight, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request by the Midland County Road Commission to levy the full one mil for each of the two voter-approved millages in Midland County for 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 76-7-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 10, please.
Dated August 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the proposed operating budget for the Midland County Central Dispatch Authority. We recommend acceptance of the proposed budget and further recommend the approval of the request to levy .7 mils for the purpose of funding central dispatch operations for 2023, including maintenance of the countywide public safety radio system. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 76-7-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 11, right?
Yep.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 76-7-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 10, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .30 mils for the purpose of funding the cost of school resource officers in Midland County in 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Is there any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 11, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Federal Financial Assistant Audit, the management and the management letter findings prepared by Raymond, and recommend acceptance of these documents as submitted. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 82-8-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 13, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Federal Financial Assistant Audit, the management and the management letter findings prepared by Raymond, and recommend acceptance of these documents as submitted. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 83-8-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 13, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to advance county operating funds ahead of an anticipation of several petition project funding financing issues. We recommend the administrator controller be authorized to transfer an advance of $800,000 to the drain revolving fund from Fund 285 ARPA to offset future expenses. Any interest earned on these advanced monies will remain in Fund 285 as allowed by law. Repayment of these funds will begin in early 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 84-8-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Next, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, have reviewed the credentials for the incoming equalization director and the subsequent request to hire the candidate above the starting salary rate. We recommend setting the salary for the incoming equalization director at a grade 15, step 2. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Gay Twilliger, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 85-8-22.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Next, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to advance county operating funds ahead of an anticipation of several petition project funding financing issues. We recommend the administrator controller be authorized to transfer an advance of $800,000 to the drain revolving fund from Fund 285 ARPA to offset future expenses. Any interest earned on these advanced monies will remain in Fund 285 as allowed by law. Repayment of these funds will begin in early 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 84-8-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number 15, please.
Date at August 12th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, have reviewed the credentials for the incoming community health nurse and the subsequent request to hire the candidate above the starting salary rate. We recommend setting the salary for the incoming community health nurse at a grade nine, step four. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Gay Twilliger, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chair, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 77-7-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Next, please.